Feeling well, and as such, will not be in attendance today. These will all be city managers' briefings that we have, and the first one will be opioid and heroin epidemic update. And Dave, you want to introduce?
Yes.
It's always good to have you here, by the way.
Hi, thank you so much. It's nice to be here, Mayor.
So today, we've got Dr. Heidi Kolberg, our Director of Public Health. And Dr. Kolberg, it's been about eight months since she was in here, and we engaged her in conversation regarding this subject. And so I think it's time that we -- she's been actively engaged, working not only with her own department, but multiple departments across the city, and I'm happy to have her today.
Welcome.
Thank you. You know, thank you so much for having me here. So Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Hanson, and everyone else, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on opioids and provide you an update about what's happening in the city as well as the state. So let's go ahead and jump right in. Here's our overview. We'll talk a little bit about the numbers, specifically what's going on in Virginia Beach. You know, we'll talk about a five-policy approach that the state has really taken and that we've adopted here in Virginia Beach and we're following. And then I want to introduce the concept of addiction as a chronic neurologic disease, really looking at changing the mindset and really breaking through with the stigma. So it's no surprise to any of us, you know, with all the news that's going on, to know that there is a crisis with regards to opioid overdose deaths. You know, the -- in 2015 in the United States, there were over 33,000 deaths. That's 91 a day. I've heard numbers of about 140 a day currently, but there's nothing that's validated coming out of CDC yet, you know, but it's continuing to be a challenge. You know, in the state of Virginia, last year, we had over 1,100 opioid deaths. So when we're talking about opioids, we're talking about everything from your run-of-the-mill painkiller, so Percocet, Dilaudid, Oxycontin, you know, to things like heroin or illicit Fentanyl or the card Fentanyl, which is that elephant tranquilizer, which is about 10,000 times the strength of morphine, you know. So when that card Fentanyl gets into, you know, the heroin or is mixed with anything else, it's pretty deadly. So, you know, unfortunately, we saw the statistics from 2015 to 2016 jump up 40% in the state of Virginia. I will say, there is, right now, a silver lining that I hope is more than a fluke. The first two quarters of 2017, it looks like the increase has slowed down. So whereas in the state of Virginia, for the January to June timeframe last year, there was 565 deaths, this year, there's been 596 overdose deaths, which is an increase of 5 and 1/2%. I say that as a silver lining, just because, you see here, you know, it was 40% increase from 2015 to 2016. Right now, it looks like it might have slowed down. Again, we'll have to see what the end-of-the-year numbers show. It also looks like, in regards to prescription drug overdose deaths, it's actually about even. The 2016 to 2017 numbers are about even right now. So again, it looks like throughout the state, with all of our combined efforts from each of the cities, from the myriad of coalitions and collaborations, from the new legislation, you know, working with clinicians and prescribers, you know, to regulate the amount of pain pills that are going into the population, it looks like there actually may be some good things that are happening. So here in Virginia Beach, in 2016, we had 72 opioid overdose deaths. I will let you know that that's a little different than a number that was given in One Vision when there was a report out to the city council. Want to explain that, just in case you're, you know, looking at your numbers. I hate it when they don't match. So I will tell you that the 83 number that was put in your One Vision report for your city council retreat was a number that came out of the police department. You know, their numbers are slightly different at times, just from the standpoint that there's don't go through the Office of the Chief Medical Examiner with all of the same hoops to jump through with the verifications. So this number of the 72 deaths last year comes out of the Virginia Office of the Chief Medical Examiner. Now unfortunately, you know, our numbers, that number of 72, put us the second highest number of deaths per locality, for a locality, in 2016. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we have over 450,000 people. So just by virtue of our sheer number of people, we're going to have a higher volume. Our rate was 15.9, so almost 16 people per every 100,000 people, you know, were -- died, you know, in our city. You know, so that is a concerning number, both real and rate, although there are unfortunately localities in our state that have rates that are well above 30, unfortunately. You know, it turns out that we had the second highest number of deaths from prescription opioid deaths last year in the state. And looking at the initial numbers for 2017, it looks like we've kept that trend as well. Now, for our city, the 2017 numbers, there have been 33 deaths so far. If that continued to track and trend, that would mean that we would actually have a decrease in our number of deaths. So 33 for the first half of the year compared to 72 all of last year. I'm cautiously optimistic that that could be a real number. However, we often don't find out till way into the following year what the true numbers are, because often, even at the end of December, there'll be cases that are still pending and waiting the lab results. So we really won't have final numbers, you know, until, you know, at least a quarter, maybe two quarters out. But it looks like we may be in a better position than we have been, which is exciting. This is what the graph itself looks like. And again, you can see, in 2014, we really started seeing the introduction of the illicit Fentanyl. So whereas Fentanyl started out being a really good pain medication prescribed, you know, by a lot of physicians, especially with chronic pain or cancer pain patients, you know, it has unfortunately turned into a drug that can be reproduced in the legal market pretty efficiently. It's 50 times more potent than morphine, and it's often now being cut into the heroin. It's also being cut into the cocaine. They found it in stashes of marijuana, you know. So it's being cut into a lot of things, and in a sense, it makes the drug more potent. So if someone's buying some heroin, and the drug dealer wants to give it an extra little kick, they get some Fentanyl in there, and it gives a lot more of a kick. And unfortunately, the brain chemistry and the mind of a person suffering from addiction doesn't follow the same logical model that ours would. You know, say you go, you know, you hear that, you know, Person X went down to the corner of, you know, the corner down the street, and that's where they always got their heroin, and they died last week. You know, whereas a normal, you know, critical-thinking brain is going to say, "Oh, my gosh, I'm not going there. I don't want to die." You know, unfortunately, the brain of an addict, you know, has undergone some changes. So that prefrontal cortex that's supposed to make executive decisions, that's supposed to have good judgment, it's not necessarily using its good judgment. It's often thinking, "Ooh, that means it's really good, strong stuff. Okay, that's where I'm going to go, because I'm fine. I know how to handle myself." Unfortunately, you know, we've seen by the spike in numbers that that is not always the case, and it's been deadly results. Another way of looking at this, instead of just looking at how many people are dying from this epidemic in our city, another way of looking is, how many overdoses are there? How many people are dying? How many people are not dying? And as it turns out, the first six months of this year, in Virginia Beach itself, we've had 107 overdoses that were known to the police. You know, so between police and EMS getting to the scene, 107. 11 people died, 96 people lived. So in our city, on average, right now, this year, for every person who died, we had 10 who didn't die, but who were utilizing, you know, either the prescription drugs or the illicit drugs in a manner that caused them to overdose. You know, so that begs a couple of questions. One, what are we doing to help those people who we knew overdosed? You know, how are we assessing them for their readiness for treatment? How are we getting them into treatment if they want it? You know, additionally, you know, what are we doing that may be impacting those numbers? Because unfortunately for Chesapeake, 24% of their overdoses resulted in death compared to 10% in our city. So are we doing something right that's changing those ratios? And at the beginning of the meeting, you know, there were multiple talks about, you know, births and, you know, the joyous event of babies coming into our families. Well, unfortunately, not every birth comes with an initial joy. You know, we've seen a dramatic rise in babies born with neonatal abstinence syndrome. So essentially, that's babies born in withdrawal. And these are numbers for the full state of Virginia. In the year 2000, there were 72 babies born in Virginia with neonatal abstinence syndrome, at least ones that we were aware of at the time. That was a rate of .7 babies per 1,000 live births. So for every 1,000, there was less than one that was born in withdrawal. In 2015, there were 626 infants born with NAS, which is a rate of a little over six per 1,000. So we went from less than one to six, you know, now. And that's concerning. You know, we don't know, actually, what's going to happen, you know, with the brains of those infants as they're becoming teenagers, as they're becoming young adults into our workforce. We do -- pardon?
The process of the baby that's born that way, does the baby get home with the parents as a general statement?
Well, and that's, I was just going to lead into that. Perfect, perfect question, because they've now found the foster care system, you know, whereas throughout the nation, the foster care system had seen a decline in children going into foster care up until 2012. When you started seeing the rise of the opioid deaths and the rise of addiction in our country, we started seeing a rise in infants going into foster care. So now, in the U.S., there were over 47,000 infants placed in foster care, and over half of them had parental substance use disorder as a risk factor and a reason they were there.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was just --
Yeah, no, it's a concerning, you know, thought. And I know that there are programs throughout the country that are really focusing on pregnant women who are addicted, who are suffering from substance use disorder. And how do you help get them clean during their pregnancy, or transition them over to a substitute that isn't going to affect the infant as much? And how do you get them into an intensive treatment program afterwards with trying to keep the family together to the best of your ability? So very good question.
Thank you.
So looking at the framework for how is this being addressed throughout the state, and how are we doing it here? You know, really, we've got a five-point framework, and we'll go over each one of these, you know, very briefly. The most obvious one, and you start with what people can really wrap their heads around. So the most obvious one is harm reduction. You know, we see the number of deaths. We know that they've been going up. What can we do to stop that? And really, naloxone or Narcan has been the saving grace. It literally saves lives when someone is in the midst of an overdose. Additionally, we worry about the spread of infectious disease. We know especially with IV drug users, that HIV, hepatitis C, and hepatitis B can be spread, you know, so programs are also being aimed at looking at the decrease. But going into our naloxone a little bit, there's really a two-pronged approach with this. One is with first responders, our police. Now EMS and the paramedics have had naloxone for quite some time. It's been around for, you know, over a decade. So they've known about that, had that, used it. But our police department was one of the first police departments in the Commonwealth of Virginia to have its officers trained and to start carrying naloxone as a life-saving drug. They started doing that in March of 2016. And you can see, the numbers for 2016 jumped up significantly from where it was with EMS doing it solo. You know, part of the rise in numbers is because more people were overdosing, you know, but I think also, if you look there, you can see that 13% of the saves were actually from the police officers. They made it to the scene first. You know, so the combination of police and EMS working hand in glove has been really beneficial, I think, for our town. Now, another statistic I put up there is how many people are having multiple revives, because that's something that's come out in the paper a lot, or that's something that's questioned. You know, so as you can see, only 18 of the 326 people who were revived by either EMS or the police department in 2016 were a repeat person.
So when naloxone is used to bring these people back, what happens to that person? Do they try to get them into a program, or do they just go back on the same?
Well, and that's, that is a great question, Rosemary. And that's something that, you know, Department of Human Services, EMS, myself, the police have been in talks about. And your next presentation is going to be from DHS, you know, and they're going to address some of that. They receive some money from the state to work on getting people into treatment. But we're still working on shoring up the system, because talking to Ed Raisel with EMS, it looks like about nine out of 10 people who they revive with the naloxone accept transport to the emergency department. Some don't. Some are chronic users, and they just know, "Hey, I bounced back, you know, I'm not going to follow up with anything, so don't even bother taking me." Okay? You know, of the nine that are going to the emergency department, they're being evaluated there. They're being given information. It's being recommended that they go into treatment, but there isn't yet a really warm handoff with that. One of the programs that has come down from Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and has received some money just within the past six months is a program to really work with peer recovery specialists. So those are people who themselves have suffered from addiction, but who are now in recovery. So they have lived experience. They have the ability to talk to the people who are currently suffering in a language that has a better chance of being understood. So I know just this past, last Monday, actually, there was a training that was started between Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Portsmouth, with the CSBs working on training some peer recovery specialists, so that they can be centered in the emergency department or close by in the areas where we know we have a higher rate of people. So those individuals will work with the clients who have been brought in for overdose and work with getting them into treatment. And again, now that DHS had some grant money to link people who don't have insurance or whose insurance doesn't cover medically assisted treatment, we have a better chance of being able to do something with that.
Oh, John?
This is now available purchase over the counter, correct?
It is.
Do we track and know how many, how many sales there have been over the counter?
Beautiful question, and I asked that exact same one in a polyconference yesterday with VDH. The answer I received was, someone else had asked two weeks ago, so they looked into it. As of this moment, no. It is not tracked in pharmacies. We do not know how many doses have been dispensed, and we have no idea how many doses have been used in homes. I was told, though, that a bill has been introduced to the General Assembly for this next cycle to integrate the pharmacies in reporting, so we can start getting a handle on that. So hopefully, after this next General Assembly session, we'll have a bill that'll allow us to do that, so, yeah.
Do they have a barcode to be, I mean, stores track their inventory to see how much money they're going to make? They wouldn't know how much is sold?
It seems it hasn't been consolidated, or it hasn't been tracked in a way that is being consolidated for information for all the pharmacies that are here. And I would hazard to guess that some of the small pharmacies may or may not have the electronic system, same with, you know, some doctor's offices, unfortunately, including the health department. We still don't have electronic health records, you know, and I would guess there are some pharmacies out there that don't. But hopefully, the bill in General Assembly will make it through next year. The other way of people getting naloxone, though, and learning about it, is in the revive classes. And again, we were one of the first jurisdictions who got involved with this. So we have representatives from public health, DHS, EMS, and police department who worked together collaboratively to train non-medical people about how to use naloxone, the myths of it, the realities, how to identify an overdose, you know, someone who's in overdose. And last Tuesday was the first time we were able to dispense naloxone at that event. So VDH used some of our end-of-the-year money to purchase 7,000 kits of naloxone, which gives that, you know, double the amount of doses. They've dispensed it to the health departments, so we can provide it no cost to people who are at high risk or friends and family members. And again, last Tuesday was our first opportunity to do that. With regards to treatment, I really just hit on the top part here, talking about medication-assisted treatment. Obviously, improved access is important in drug courts. You know, Virginia Beach just started, you know, their drug court, so we're in the first year of that cycle, getting people into treatment. But, you know, the key thing with the medication-assisted treatment is there now are three different medications that can be used to assist in treatment from substance use disorder, from opioid addiction. You know, historically, there's just been methadone, which has been around since the 1970s. You know, with methadone, it's highly regulated. It's an opioid agonist, so it means it literally goes to the same place that that heroin or Fentanyl or other opioids went. It literally binds the same place. It still can give you a little bit of a feel-good, you know, but, so it's highly regulated, you know, and so it's something that someone who's working with methadone clinics has to go every single day to get their dose. That makes it a little challenging to have a typically, you know, normal, productive life, but it can happen. You know, within the past 10 years, there have been additional medications that have come onto the field, specifically buprenorphine. You might have heard of it, you know, in its brand name of Suboxone. It's a partial agonist, so it binds, but it doesn't give the same, you know, exhilarating feeling, or it doesn't have that same potential. It also doesn't have the same withdrawal potential, you know, as the methadone does. It's really patient-specific as to what someone would need, but the key is that there are medications now. You know, so these medications, the buprenorphine, the methadone, they are every bit as important to an addict, an opioid addict, as insulin is to a diabetic. And we now know that if you have the medication, if you're in group counseling, you have counseling, and you're working with a peer recovery specialist, or like a 12-step Narcox Anonymous program, that you have up to a 60% chance of getting clean. Exactly. The eyebrows raised, you know, because if you're trying it on your own, the studies say between 5 and 20%, usually more towards the 5. It's hard to get clean totally on your own. So there's medications. And I won't steal all of Human Services' thunder, but just know that they did recently get a grant. They're connecting people to treatment, and they've exceeded, you know, their first quarter's goal of getting 25 people into treatment. They've more than doubled it. And they'll tell you more about that shortly. Just a quick reminder, I think you all know that, you know, prescription drugs are a problem. You know, basically, Percocet is legal heroin. They interact in the same place in the brain. You know, so looking at, you know, the magnitude of the drug problem, in 2012, nearly 260 million prescriptions were written for opiates, for painkillers. That's enough for every adult in the United States to have their own bottle of pills. That's not the number of pills. That's the number of bottles of pills that were out there. There's four times as many as 1999, and yet, the pain reports, you know, how much pain people were having, didn't change an iota. Now, I will say, the good news is, since 2012, you know, this has been talked about. Now, medical schools are doing a lot more education with pain management. In the Commonwealth of Virginia, physicians now have to do, you know, a certain number of continuing medical education credits in order to maintain our license. We have to be registered with a prescription monitoring program in order to maintain our license. And in March of this year, regulations were put out by the state to talk about how prescriptions should be done. However, despite that, in 2016, there was a study that came out in the Annals of Internal Medicine, showing that of people who had a non-fatal overdose, okay, so they had overdose, they had died briefly or come really close to it, 91% of them were still given opioids pain pills by their doctors.
Yeah, and you know, that's, I think you're bringing up what's an extremely important part of this, because I can think of two examples post-2012 where this is, this is still an issue. I have a friend of mine who had to have surgery because she had broken her ankle.
Okay.
She went to the pharmacy because they'd given her prescription for her Percocet ahead of time. They would not give her her antibiotics because they were controlled. So she picked up her Percocet before the surgery.
Oh, you're kidding.
And could not get her antibiotics till afterwards. Another story, my daughter was a senior in college, had a sore throat at JMU, thought she had strep, because everybody had strep, so she went to the doctors to see, and the doctors, the university health was closed, it was late, later in the evening. She wanted to get whatever it was, so she didn't come down with full-blown strep. Well, she goes in there, and they gave her 10 Percocets.
For strep throat?
For strep throat, for sore throat. Which, you know, it's just, and that's, that's two separate incidents that I know of that just make absolutely no sense. And it's, you know, they treat antibiotics like they're something dangerous and horrible, but, you know, painkillers, opioids, they give out like candy.
And hopefully, it's changing, and I will, I will share a, you know, silver lining story, or I'm hoping this goes in the right direction. I went to my dentist this morning, you know, regular six-month checkup. That one of the pieces of paper they had me sign, at the bottom of it, in small print, and I took a picture of this, it said, "We participate in the prescription monitoring program. If we are considering giving you opioids, we may look you up in the prescription monitoring program to understand your status and your risk." And I thought, "Good for them. That wasn't there six months ago." You know, so I know, not, I know a lot of the medical societies are having talks. I've done over two dozen talks to various groups this year so far, you know, including a couple talks to Centerra. You know, I'm giving another, I'm giving a talk to their nurses statewide convention on Monday. You know, I know a lot of the health systems are really looking at this heavily. They've been looking at it, you know, pretty well in their emergency departments for about two years, not that everything's been taken care of, but they've been looking at it. You know, I gave a talk to the Women's Health High Performance Team at Centerra, who's in charge of all their labor and delivery units throughout the state, their whole system. And I know that they were doing some real intensive studies at prescribing patterns for the obstetricians. You know, why are some women who are having vaginal deliveries going home with 60 Percocet, whereas other hospitals, you know, are regulating and not giving it out unless you've had a, you know, really challenging C-section? You know, so there's a lot of look at standardization of practice nowadays, but there are still scary stories. This just is here to remind us that, again, that prescription pain medicines are highly addictive. They've now found that, you know, whereas if you are chronically using marijuana, you have three times the risk of becoming a heroin addict. If you are addicted to prescription pain pills, you have a 40 times the chance of becoming addicted to heroin. It has that much similarity in the brain and the binding and receptors. So what are some things that we're doing to address this? Well, we've kind of been talking about it with, you know, the prescribing patterns, you know, but the key thing here in Virginia Beach, and I have to tell you, I brag about us every single time I talk. You know, our police department has 24/7/365 drug take-back boxes. They've been collecting prescription medications since April of last year. You know, your support of Chief Severa and his department, and allowing them the green light to go ahead with that, has been phenomenal. In the past year, they collected nearly 4,000 pounds. In the past year, they collected nearly 4,000 pounds of prescription medications in one year. So I'll give a plug, you know, for nationally, the DEA has their Drug Take-Back Days, and the next one is this Saturday. We don't have a site for their Drug Take-Back Days because we do it every single day of the year. We don't just do it once or twice a year. You know, so you can go to any one of our four precincts and drop off your medications. I tried it out myself, just to see. You don't have to sign in. You just go in, ask where the box is. Literally, it's like a mailbox. You put them in. So, you know, what else is going on from the illicit front? Well, again, you know, the police department has been involved in this for so many years. I mean, at some very obvious levels of crime reduction and drug diversion, and working with task forces from throughout Hampton Roads as well as the state. And it turns out, when the law enforcement works on a task force, what they're really trying to do is make it so they can work across jurisdictions, okay? So obviously, you know, the police department here in Virginia Beach can't normally go over to Portsmouth and arrest someone. But if they're a part of a task force, and the supplier for those opioids is over there, they can work collaboratively to make that happen. Same thing's happening with FBI, DEA, and Homeland Security. You know, so disrupting that supply, you know, also working with forced protection. So we think of the naloxone as saving the lives of people who have overdosed. It also acts as forced protection, because nowadays, that fentanyl especially, the fentanyl and the car fentanyl can be absorbed, you know, through the skin, or easily absorbed through mucous membranes. But if you had a cut in your skin, it can be absorbed. And there are cases throughout the U.S. of police officers, you know, overdosing just by accidentally touching a white substance that they didn't realize was fentanyl. So. And last but not least, we'll go, the last section, I'll try to go through this one quickly, but just thinking about the cultural changes and the stigma associated. I use that to highlight what's in this table. Between the first decade of 2000 and the second decade of 2000, the number of women addicted to heroin has doubled. The number of Caucasians addicted to heroin has doubled. The number of 18- to 25-year-olds addicted to heroin has doubled. So the face of an addict can look like any face you'd run across, you know, walking down the street or anywhere in our city. Now, highlight thinking about children, and we'll get into brain development in just a second, but the Surgeon General put out a report, November of 2016, and in it, one of the things that he highlighted was looking at the brain chemistry and component of this disease. And we know that the brain is not fully developed until someone's about 25 years old, okay? So anytime you put a toxin of any sort into a young brain, it has the chance of altering the normal neural pathways and the chemical response. What they found is youth who started, tried their first illicit drug before the age of 13, while their brain is still definitely developing on so many different levels, had a 70% chance of becoming addicted in their life. If you simply put off that experimentation, and I am not advocating any experimentation, but if you can put that off until they're 18 or older, that chance goes down to 27% chance. So that's huge. I use this to underscore the importance of educating our children, educating our parents on what this can do to a body. You know, how do our bodies react, and what kind of long-term effects are we talking about? You know, I'll give a shout-out to Carolyn Weems and the Virginia Beach School Board. Carolyn Weems has been a champion since she lost her daughter three, four years ago at this point. And she has worked with the schools to create a curriculum that has SOL components in it, so it's really well-integrated into the curriculum, to teach drug awareness and education. The curriculum starts in first grade and goes all the way through high school. So in first grade, kind of talking about the prescription drugs, you know, in first grade, some of it is just, you know, holding up a pill bottle and saying, "These are bottles that have medicine your doctor may give you. If you see a bottle lying around, bring it to your parent or trusted adult. Don't try eating what's inside. It's not candy." You know, so it goes from that kind of age-appropriate discussion to working their way up through the curriculum to really talk about specific drugs and their effects, and the neuro and brain development. In the Surgeon General report, it's called Facing Addiction in America, and it deals with both alcohol as well as drug addiction. It estimates that 1 in 7 Americans will suffer from substance use disorder in their lifetime. That's 15% of our population. At some point in time, will either have alcohol abuse, alcoholism, drug abuse, you know? So it is common. In 2015, 20.8 million people were diagnosed with a substance use disorder. That's 8% of our adult population. Another disease that's 8% of our population, diabetes. Both of them chronic diseases. Both of them high relapse rate. You know, how many diabetics do you know that when they were first told they were diabetic, they started eating perfectly, they exercised each day, and they never fell off that wagon? Not many. Same challenge with, you know, most people suffering from substance use disorder. And the 78 a day was the number of deaths in the United States that year. We know it was 91 a day in 2015. And just briefly, unless you really want more, you know, and I can answer questions afterwards, but, you know, the brain chemistry. When I went to med school, you know, 25-plus years ago, you know, we knew there was one part of the brain called the basal ganglia, you know, that dealt with addiction. We know that's where the dopamine is. That's what gives you the "woo!", you know, the real feel-good, you know, chemicals in your body, you know? And as a species, we needed those. We needed those to make sure that when we ate, we got that boost, so we'd go out and hunt, get more food, and survive. You know, nowadays, there are a lot of things that trigger that point, but what we now know is not only do the opioids trigger that dopamine surge, but that's also where our conditioning response is. So from any of you who remember your psychology days and Pavlov's dog ringing the bell and the dog salivates kind of concept, you know, it's the idea that even when an addict has been clean for a while, say, they've been in rehab, or they've been incarcerated, if they drive by that corner where they used to get high, their body gives them a dopamine surge. They get a boost. They get that tingly feeling, they get that "woo!", and they want more. The other thing that we now know is there's another part of the brain called the extended amygdala. It's the red one down there. That part doesn't want you to feel bad. That's the part that protects us from stress or bad situations. It's also the part that in addiction wants to avoid withdrawal at all costs. So when heroin addicts have been interviewed, they find most heroin addicts started it because they want to feel good. They kept using the heroin because they didn't want to feel like crap. They didn't want to feel like death warmed over, you know, having the goosebumps, having the feeling like you've got the flu and you're run over by a Mack truck, feeling all the other bad things. And that's the part of the brain that protects you from, you know, those feelings. So it says, "Let's go for it." And then the last part is that decision-making component of your brain, that it has a hard time fighting off those other two, and it just makes poor decisions. So I will contend, you know, and the Surgeon General challenged us to all think of addiction as a chronic neurologic disease. We know there are multiple parts in the brain that are abnormal once someone goes into addiction. That pathways have been created differently over time. You know, this isn't a moral failing. You know, this is rooted in biology and chemistry. So moving forward, you know, right now, I'm working on getting more Virginia Beach-specific data. You know, we're working with the emergency departments to actually look at surveillance data and see who we have coming in, how often they're coming in, so that we can best align those peer recovery, you know, specialists with the appropriate times to be in the emergency department. We're looking at, how can we best break down the barriers to data sharing while still protecting someone's privacy? Because that's a really challenging balance. You know, we're looking at, how do we really engage the healthcare systems, you know, the Centerra's, the urgent cares, and really work in partnership? And we've got great collaborations here with Human Services, EMS, and Police Department. And then continuing to go out and educate, empower, and inform not only our leaders, but our citizens and our partners as well. And last but not least, removing that stigma. You know, if we can change the mindset, you know, to this is a chronic disease, a brain disease, you know, perhaps we can lift the veil of darkness and silence. We can start talking about it, you know, whether it's with friends and family members, or whether it's people who are suffering coming out into the light asking for help. So thank you so much for all of your support of the various departments who are working on this, for giving me your time today to listen to my talk, and, you know, for, you know, really investing in the people of our community.
Phil, let me just say, I know I'm speaking for the entire council's excellent presentation.
Thank you so much.
It's, you know, I'd be willing to say there's no one in this room that hasn't had a family member or a friend impacted by this awful, awful, you know, opioid, you know, epidemic. And, you know, I know that we want to do everything we can. You know, to me, it's a two thing. I'm a very simplistic person. It's catch the people who are selling it, and help the people who are addicted to get off of it, and of course, educate young people not to get on it.
Right.
But, you know, it's easier said than done, isn't it?
Definitely. Yeah. The exciting thing, when I went to a presentation about the curriculum, we were down at the, you know, school headquarters, working with the Hampton Roads Opioid Working Group and, you know, the AG's office. You know, because the curriculum that's being introduced, and they're being introduced to the concept of this is a chronic disease, just like diabetes, just like high blood pressure, this is a chronic disease. You know, so the thought that the current generation will grow up with that mindset so that people don't have to hide, people can have open discussions, is exciting and empowering. We just have to wait the 20 years for them to get there, you know? So what do we do in the meantime? And how do we help those who need help? And how do we prevent others from falling into that addiction?
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming by. We really appreciate it. You take care.
Thanks very much.
I'm going to stay with DHS.
Okay. Let's do the Mental Health Initiative. Danette, I bet you she's coming in.
I would hope.
All right, Jay Hayson will do this.
There you are. Who can save me, Danette? I was worried about you. Excuse me.
You look convinced.
Danette, we're glad to have you here.
Glad to be here, Mayor. Good afternoon to City Council. I am so excited for Angie and I to join our sister department, Dr. Heidi Kolberg, in addressing issues around opiate addiction. And so if you have your PowerPoint that we put in your packet, we're going to go right to page 6, because we want to talk a little bit about our opiate services. I'm going to bring, I have the pleasure of having my mental health director here with me today, Angela Hicks. And she is going to be walking you through the services that the department offers. We will be quick. We're going to be prepared to address any of your questions, but we thought that since Dr. Kolberg left off with opiate addiction, we would pick up and talk with you about services, what we are doing in the department, the kind of funding that we are getting from the state, and then we'll move right into mental health services. Angie?
Thank you.
So nice to see all of you today. Thanks for allowing me to join your session.
We're glad to have you here.
Thank you, sir. When I realized that I would have to follow Dr. Kolberg, I thought, "Oh, boy, tough shoes to fill, right?" But all joking aside, Dr. Kolberg is an amazing partner with Human Services, and certainly with our work against the opioid epidemic that everyone's heard about. So starting with the opioid enhancements that we have, as she briefly mentioned, we started Revive in April of last year, and we were among the first in the state to launch that. It was not an easy initiative. There was really no foundation and guidelines for it. And so we came together with EMS, the police, public health, and of course, we had a clinician and a nurse involved, and we launched it in Virginia Beach very early on. And I'm proud to say that we had a training next week that boosted that number of people trained to 236. In the middle of last year, we were able to be able to tell folks they could get naloxone without a prescription. That was wonderful news. And then, as Dr. Kolberg mentioned, now they're able to access naloxone free of charge. So all of that helped to break down some of the barriers for access. Very new this year, our state dollars that are geared toward opiate treatment and prevention. We have received $942,586, to be exact, to be able to treat 207 individuals with medication-assisted treatment. And I know Dr. Kolberg has already explained to you what that means, so I'll just tell you that in addition to the treatment component, these dollars allow us to break down barriers to successful treatment. So you could have a working mother who's unable to go to treatment because she doesn't have childcare. Or you could have someone who can't get to treatment because they lack transportation or housing. You know, how can, it's the hierarchy of needs. How can you participate in treatment when you don't have a home, or clothing, or transportation? So this funding allows us to be able to meet those needs, which increases our success rate. And I'm pleased to tell council that our first 90-day target was to treat 24 individuals, and we have, as of today, reached 69. So there are a lot of people in need out there, and they are getting the help that they need. We also have the Prevention Initiative. And a lot of these initiatives you'll find go hand-in-hand, because it's one thing to have treatment dollars available, but if people don't know it exists, then you can't reach the people who need it the most. And so we received $25,000 to be able to launch an opioid marketing campaign. This campaign allows us to increase community awareness through public service announcements. We run ads in movie theaters. We also had an opioid and heroin forum that was held on the 19th, and we had 105 people turn out for that event, which was wonderful. The Regional Peer Outreach Initiative, Dr. Kolberg briefly mentioned to you. As a region, we have received $267,000 approximately to be able to launch this partnership between Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Portsmouth. And what that means is that each of the three cities will have two peer specialists assigned to be able to do community engagement and outreach in the emergency departments. And we find that that is a prime location to be able to engage with individuals. And peers can do it in a way that we cannot. They're able to establish a connection immediately with individuals because they walked in their shoes. I did substance use counseling groups in the hospital for many years, and one of the questions that I would always get is, "Well, what do you know about it? You've never walked a day in my shoes. How can you tell me how to change my life?" And so peers are an integral part of moving forward with this, and we're so pleased to be able to tell you that we've hired our two peers. So they're in the regional training this week, and we hope to be able to launch very soon. So with that, that's an overview of some of the opioid enhancements that we have. If we could back up to slide 2 or 3. Let's go to the priorities. A lot has changed in behavioral health care over the last decade or so. It used to be that years ago, when someone had a serious mental illness, a pervasive illness, those individuals would be treated in state hospitals. And as you all are most likely aware, the hospitals have downsized, and now there is a focus on community-based services. And so there is a lot of pressure to be able to change our continuum in the community to meet the needs and divert from state hospitals and jails. And so very recently, we realized that our state hospital was at 105% capacity for a few weeks. And so we're looking at... And so, we're looking at what can we do in the community to be able to treat individuals safely where they can have a better quality of life? Let's be honest, living in a state institution is not a good quality of life. So, we would all agree that they're better served in the community if we have the infrastructure and resources to do so. So, that has been a big change for us with the Cradeeds incident that happened, that tragedy created a last resort rule. And so, individuals go to the state hospital after a TDO when eight hours has expired. They have to be in a bed at the eight-hour mark, and if there's not a local hospital to meet that need, then they go to the safety net bed at Eastern State Hospital. So, these are some of the pressure points that we're facing in the community because we have more complex needs in our communities and our resources have changed. And so, we also are seeing a dynamic with the change in managed care. I don't know if you're aware, I'm sure you are, Virginia's moving to a managed care system, and we have six new MCOs that we are working with for Commonwealth Coordinated Care Plus. And that is leading us into the realm of integrated care, where we're focusing on the whole person, the medical and the psychiatric, making sure that we're meeting the whole needs of the individual. And it will not be long before the payers, the company, insurance companies that reimburse us, will be looking at the outcomes that we achieve. And so, we have to be mindful of that, and all of this has played into our priorities that you see on the screen. Same access to care, rapid crisis response, being able to get people in the door, see them when they need it in real time, mobile, flexible, as they need it, integrated for the whole person, and of course, addressing the opioid epidemic.
So, is this, you said the insurance companies reimburse you, does that mean the city is now a direct provider? And under those contracts, if our costs exceed their thresholds, then we therefore don't get a reimbursement of the contract, but now, is it the state or the city that's liable for the, pay those costs that we've incurred? I'm trying to understand, I didn't realize the city itself was becoming the, had a fiduciary responsibility at the, at those contracts, you have a liability, they don't pay you because of the terms. Who holds, who holds that financial risk for performance?
Well, I don't know that I'm the best person to answer that, but I can tell you that we have been in the healthcare business for years, and we are, we've been reimbursed by primarily DMAS, state Medicaid product. But now, that's changing. And so, we have insurance companies that we've been working with for several years, Medicaid, Medicare, now we have the managed care companies that we started working with four years ago. And so, now, we do have contracts with each of the MCOs to be able to provide particular services.
So, it's a managed, not think I said correctly, but it's, you are contracting with managed care facilities, and they're the ones that are carrying that financial risk?
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
We are the provider.
You initially said, I thought, it sounded like we were the ones doing it, and we were getting reimbursed.
No, no.
When in reality is, you're just getting money from the state funneling it to those groups. Managed care groups are getting the money through the city, so we're just the conduit.
With the conduit.
So, if they incur greater expenses than what that is, that's a financial risk they incur.
Yes.
Okay, I'm definitely sure I had that straight. Okay, very good. That makes sense to me now.
Yes.
DMAS will incur that, not us.
Super, I got it.
Yes, and they're monitoring that very closely with the, with the MCOs. Drilling a little deeper into each of our priority areas, access to care is something that's very important, and in fact, all of you all may, may hear about this, your constituents may be interested in getting in quickly to receive help when they need it. It's something that's very important, and we certainly have to do it if we're going to keep people out of jail and out of the hospital. We are proud to be able to tell you that we started a same-day access clinic in February of this year. We have same-day access hours available five days per week, and we have a consultant that will be coming to work with us in November to help us determine our ability to expand that even further to serve more people with same-day access, which means they, they call and they can come in that afternoon. Case management expansion. People come in our front door through same-day access, and they need a service, just like any of us, if we go to the urgent care or to our physician. We don't want just an assessment, we want a service. We want our sprained ankle or whatever it is to receive treatment that day. And so, what I'm going to move into now is the downstream of some of this. We bring clients in, but then what do we provide to them? We've transferred four positions into our case management program, and what this will allow us to do is to be able to provide transitional case management services. So, if an individual walks in the door, they receive their comprehensive assessment by a licensed clinician, now they can be referred to a case manager to be able to help meet some of their other needs, like, I need a primary care physician, where do I get that? I don't have benefits, I need housing, I need clothing. And so, this person will be able to help fill that gap between our front door and the next service. Forensic services expansion. We were able to receive additional funding to expand our PAC team, and thank you all very much for your support with that years ago, to add PAC team to Virginia Beach. It's very successful, and we received the additional state dollars to add 18 forensic slots, and I'm pleased to report to you that they've all been filled. We have also started a drug court. The standard operating procedures have all been completed, and the first person has been identified, so I expect that we will be able to see the 10 individuals, participants in drug court very soon. Partnership with the sheriff's office. I can't say enough about this. Director Smith and Eileen and I have been working very closely with Sheriff Stolli and his deputies, and I believe that we have a wonderful partnership. We've been enhancing our services, improving our communication, and working on ways to serve more individuals in the jail and to do it better. We have, very recently, it's not even on this slide yet, because out of a meeting a week or so ago, we decided that Human Services staff would participate in weekly case reviews. And so, that allows us to communicate more in real time about the individuals in the jail who are going to need additional services when they're released. With reentry, we have gone from serving 231 individuals in fiscal '16 to 419 in fiscal '17. And knowing the importance of this initiative, we have very recently transferred two additional positions into our correctional services unit. And we project that by doing that, we'll be able to increase the number served in the jail by, to 775. So, we're very excited about that partnership. I think the sheriff would tell you that we're heading in the right direction, and so, very pleased about that. Moving on to rapid crisis response. When it comes to crisis, we're always thinking about how can we see the person faster? We strive for within the hour, and so, we recently started video evaluations to try to assist our prescreeners with gaining additional capacity. Anyone who has made the drive from First Colonial Road out where Virginia Beach Psychiatric Center is, over to SPA, as we call it, Centerra Princess Sand Hospital, that can take an hour or two, depending on traffic, round trip. And so, we have started the video evaluations to try to use technology wisely to increase our capacity. We are also going to be expanding our crisis intervention services so that we have a dynamic mobile crisis response team. Getting into the crisis early on when it's initially detected is when it makes a difference, not after it's built and built and built, and then the person lands in the emergency department, and there's nowhere to go but the hospital. So, we plan to have an early intervention response. CIT, as we're very proud of and all of you are aware of, our partnership with the police continues to go strong, and I think we're well-respected in the state. We, to date, have trained 336 police officers, 117 deputies, and 100% of our 911 dispatchers, fire captains, and SROs. I think that's absolutely wonderful because that makes a difference. Police can be first on the scene, and so, how they respond to that can make a true difference in the outcome of that event. Now, what we're working on is expanding our CIT relationship with EMS. They're interested in a curriculum that's more geared toward what they do. They end up in the communities as first responders in a mental health crisis as well. So, we're going to be working with them to see how we can be able to modify what we do so that they have the tools that they need. So, very proud of that. Integrated care. You know, it's so sad to me that a statistic is that people with a serious mental illness die 25 years younger than the rest of us. I think we would all say in 2017, that's unacceptable. It happens for a variety of reasons, either they're not willing to get care, they don't know how to get it, the community doesn't provide it effectively for people who can't advocate for themselves, and then there's the partnership and the communication between private medical providers and us. And so, the future is to come together and integrate those services so that we can have continuity of care for one individual. We all know that how we feel every day, our wellness when we come to work, when we play after work in the great city of Virginia Beach, we all know that it's not just any one thing. It's the biological, the psychological, it's the socioeconomic, all of that plays into how successful we are every day. And so, we recognize that as a department, and we are readying the ship. So, what we're doing right now is we are offering medical screening and linkage, so we help people get connected to medical providers. We coordinate care, and we exchange records with primary care physicians. We train our staff on comorbid medical conditions that our clients most encounter, and we have a registered nurse who serves as an enhanced care manager. So, she works with individuals who have the most complex combination of medical and psychiatric needs. Imagine someone who has severe schizophrenia that's not controlled, their symptoms are not controlled, on their own, trying to treat insulin-independent type 1 diabetes without help. The success rate for that is not good at all, and we see a lot of healthcare expense come from that, but most importantly, we see people dying. And so, we are very in tune with the need to continue that. The future of integrated care for us will involve an exploration of the different models that are out there. There's a variety of ways that systems like ours can engage in integrated care, so we'll be exploring that, and we'll also be looking into new facilities that may be equipped to help us meet that need moving forward. And we are also going to implement disease prevention and health promotion throughout our entire age department. A couple of other initiatives that we have, and trust me, this is just a little sprinkling of everything we have going on, I feel like I should say that. These are some of the things we identify as very important, but we pride ourselves on being future-thinking and trying to adjust what we're doing now to meet the needs as we see them coming. Housing has also changed. We are moving away from congregate housing, moving away from transitional housing, into permanent supportive housing, putting people in an affordable, safe place to live with permanency. And so, we received state funding to assist 72 individuals with getting their own apartment. And 23 individuals have been housed with another 10 that are progressing, but there is nothing like the day when you see a person who's never had their own place to live move into their own apartment. There's just nothing like it. That sense of pride and accomplishment, and then seeing their life turn around, so it's a, it's a very important project, and we hope that we'll see that grow in the future because we will fill those 72 beds with no problem. Court-ordered treatment. This is a different initiative from drug court. It's not a specialty court or a docket, it's more of a collaborative process with the court system, the public defender's office, probation and parole, and ourselves, and what we did is we got together and we had several meetings where we talked about recidivism, and what can we do differently when people are exiting jail to be able to encourage them to be participants in their own care? And so, what we agreed is we would set up a wraparound service model, and so, the individual can make a plea agreement saying that they will participate in all of the services that are recommended by the treatment team with the CSB or the Department of Human Services. And so, when that happens and the person takes the plea agreement, then we help them prepare for release, we work with them in the jail, and we pick them up the day they're released, and we do a warm handoff from the door of the jail to our intake unit. And then, they go very rapidly from intake to seeing the doctor, to case, having a case manager, a case manager, to having adult day treatment and substance use services, whatever they need, we make sure that they get it in a rapid fashion. And we are going to be studying this and researching this and finding out what kind of outcomes we see different because we all know that data drives decisions with people who make the purse strings move and decide what's valuable, and so, we hope that we'll see good outcomes that we can report back to show our progress. And then, are there any questions for me before Director Smith comes up?
Please, John.
On the integrated case management, as I understand it, this was all put in place to, to push the cost curve, put a cap on the cost curve because that money coming from the feds is coming down, so there's a cap on what these people can receive. So, I'm wondering, in this system, does that mean that there's a, a number of people that you can serve in a year? And I'm trying to figure out, you know, because if you get this integrated service and that dollar was X, whatever that is, and it's a cap, I'm sure they're not saying they're going to serve X plus Y number of people. So, you have a number of eligible people that you can do in a year.
They, they've.
You have your costs contained under the system, as I understand it, is that correct?
They've not established a cap with us on the number of people, they've established a cap on the, the amount of hours and service per person.
Well, so then, in fact, so that you, so there isn't a cost cap, there is only a number of hours per person that you.
Uh huh, yeah.
I'll see how long that lasts, I'm curious.
But also, the other way that we're looking at it is, and there's a couple of really good models throughout the country, where behavioral health and the integrated piece of primary care is being integrated into one, lacing it with social services. So, we're really looking at that model since all of those responsibilities fall up under the city or up under the Department of, of Human Services. Here's a couple of states that have really good models. Salt Lake City is one, Portland, Oregon is another one, and in Colorado, the state of Colorado is beginning to look at that. We believe that if we're able to allow people who have significant behavioral health issues a one-stop shop, we can treat them faster, quicker, and get them back on their, when they have to go to multiple sites like they do right now, it's just difficult.
Oh, I'm all in very integrated care, I've just seen the instructions that went to the various budget committees in Congress for reductions in Medicaid.
Yes.
Which are substantial.
Yes.
So, somewhere along the line, either the state ponies up and makes up that difference, or you service less people, and that's just what I'm trying to understand.
I, I think that the interesting part of how we move forward with this will be the value-based reimbursement that's coming, and so, they will either see us as a vehicle to save money in other ways to continue. I think that's definitely going to impact how that works in the future.
I wish you much success, and I can tell you, you're really on top of it.
Jessica, okay, we got another question from Jessica.
I had a quick question about the court-ordered treatment.
Yes, ma'am.
If somebody fails to comply, so they, they're, they're leaving jail and they're deciding to go on your treatment, your treatment plan, and then they fail to be successful, what is the implication? Is it a potential for more time they have to serve?
It is, but we don't go there first. We first try to problem-solve, we work collaboratively with the probation officer, we can bring them back in front of the judge, and the judge could decide to do a sanction of some kind and have them try again. That's our preference, is to be able to give them opportunities to succeed.
Is there any data on how many people make it through the program or don't, or?
We just took our first person, it's brand new.
What I meant, with any other, without any other cities or that you know of?
I don't.
Okay, I was just curious.
That's okay.
Any other questions or comments? Another great presentation.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for coming over tonight.
Angie, Danette, thank you very much.
Okay, we're doing planning items and a glimpse.
Right. I think Kevin do the first draw, right?
Yes, sir.
Caroline wants to be second today. As they're getting set up, I'm really pleased with how, how. As they're getting set up, I'm really pleased with how, how our directors are looking at their resourcing and they're starting to leverage the assets that we provide them and are taking a good, hard look at performance. And Danette's work at looking at her performance measures of her workforce has created an ability for her to cross-level those resources. And you saw two different occasions in that briefing where they have cross-leveled their resources to, to ride to the sound of the guns, if you will, where we need to put an extra emphasis. So, some good things happening in there. We'll see how it all pans out.
Very good.
Kevin, you're on.
Kevin, we're glad to have you, buddy.
Thank you. The moment you guys have all been waiting for. Carol and I will briefly go over the 10 items we have for November, seven on the first agenda and three on the second. With the exception of number six here, Grace Bible, which I'll touch on later, all of these were recommended for approval by both the staff and Planning Commission. Let's get started. First item is a CUP in the Beach District at Hilltop. This is for cosmetic tattooing, microblading. Woman wants to run a 1,500-square-foot cosmetology school and have microblading as a service and to teach it. No changes-
I'm just going to leave you on the observation, we might want to look at getting this type of thing, not have to come before council, you know. I, I think-
We have had an influx.
You know, just a thought.
[laughing]
I'm seeing a lot of heads nodding.
It'd make Shannon's life a lot easier.
Go, go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Oh, it, it is noted and those are the kind of things, when they keep on reoccurring, that we should look at the ordinance.
Great.
All right, let's get on to the second one. It's a CUP for a hair care center in the Princess Anne District. This is in that new shopping center, pretty close to the intersection of Princess Anne and Seaboard. This site was rezoned to O2 in 2009 in the O2 District. You need a CUP for hair care. They are going into an existing unit, no changes, except the signage, ample parking, and staff recommended approval, so did Planning Commission. Third item is a CUP for motor vehicle sales in the Rose Hall District. This 25,000-square-foot site was previously a dry cleaner. The applicant now is going to do some minor changes to the site, paint the roof, and make it automobile sales. Really, the changes are just extending the pavement to have a bigger display area to the left on-site there and to add some landscaping along Lynn Haven Parkway. Although auto sales isn't, you know, prevalent on this part of Lynn Haven Parkway, there was a CUP approved in 2012 for this use just north of the site.
Where's that closest to, go back to the map? Yeah, where's that intersection, what is that?
It's, Holland Road is right here.
Oh, okay, I see.
So, it's just up, make a right, just on the left there. It was a zoots cleaner for, that's its most recent use. Fourth item is a rezoning from B2 to R20. This is kind of a unique site, Davis Street, if you're familiar with it. Back in 1968, the whole street was rezoned from residential duplex to B2. Since then, many of the sites have been redeveloped or reused, some of them within the existing residences that now have businesses. This site is the last one on the street. What happened is the applicant purchased the residence and it has been a residence ever since 1950 when it was built. They went to get a loan and to get a government-approved loan, they said it needed the residential zoning to match the residential use. They came to us and requested this rezoning. Really, no changes to the site. It is strictly for their mortgage company. There was one opposition and it was the religious, religious use across the street. They just worried about the residential blending in with the commercial, commercial nature of Davis and what it's become. And to that, you know, the, you will see on the right there, there is a commercial use, but this is the last lot before it goes into the multifamily directly adjacent to it. So, I think we would have looked differently if it wasn't the middle of the street, but staff recommended approval, as did Planning Commission. Fifth item is a CUP for a craft brewery. This will be the first craft brewery in the Vibe District. Site is located on a small site next to a 76-unit apartment complex that is under construction and a rowhouse complex which is slated for demolition. The project itself, it's 2,600-square-foot building, 1,600 of it which will be dedicated to seating. They will paint the building, do some minor exterior stuff, as well as a 600-square-foot addition.
So, it's going from a gym to a brewery.
Yes. And the, the thing that is unique-
That's me.
[laughing] Whatever your vice is, right?
One's easier to exercise.
Oh, man, you just opened up.
But it is, one, one unique feature of this, they are building an addition to the back 600 square feet. 400 square feet on that roof will be an outdoor seating area on the roof. Just to note that that seating area will be screened with vegetation from the adjoining residential uses. And similar to other breweries, you know, outdoor music is restricted in hours and staff... Oh, I guess the last thing is parking. As you can see, it's a really small site with very limited parking. They submitted a parking study to the zoning office. We looked at it. Their parking will be accommodated off-site within a block or two. And really, in this district, this is the kind of use that, you know, we encourage that shared parking and using other, that type of thing. So, we approved that parking study. All right, this one should look familiar, Grace Bible. It has come forward, the first time it was accompanied a CUP for a religious use and a rezoning of those front parcels. This one is just the conditional use permit for the religious use. Religious use takes up 16 acres of the 20. The rezonings on the front, which was to B2, the applicant withdrew those from this request. So, all we're looking at is religious use. It is a 31,000-square-foot proposed church with 600 seats, 335 parking spaces, one point of egress along London Bridge Road. I will say this was voted on for denial by Planning Commission. However, all the issues were based on those front parcels and the B2 and the uses that they feared would go in there. So, there were no objections at Planning Commission to the religious use.
Excuse me, one second. Over.
You had a very large number of parking spaces. Are they all in front of the church?
Uh, yes, they are, front and the side.
Are any of them going to join any residential?
Uh, no, the Densys Residential is here. This area right here would adjoin residential. There is a buffer there, but the parking circled, pretty much circles the church on all ends.
So, there's not going to be any parking directly adjoining residential?
Um, yes, there will be, along the eastern property line here. The church sits right here and the parking comes around here. So, these houses right here will have one row of parking.
I don't know. Go back, if you take a look here, back up one. You have houses here, you have houses here. Now, go to the picture of the site plan. You're going to have houses here and you're going to have houses here, and the parking is here.
So, the impact is minimal.
So, the answer is with a buffer, there'll be a buffer and, and we'll be watching elevations.
Well, how much, I guess we got a map.
darn right it will.
All right, Mr. King, keep it going.
All right, and last item for November 7th. This one may also look familiar. This is a, uh, request that you deferred on September 19th.
Our council member from the area's got it all worked out.
And-
It all figured out, Shannon?
And that's what I like to hear, there were some revisions that were done to the plan and thank you for working it out.
Wow, see how those cards fall.
Yep, but there were some revisions, some additional uses that were proffered out, you know, such as convenience stores, motor vehicle sales, bulk storage, tattoo parlors, and then a second entrance right in, right out was shown along Holland Road. So, are there any questions? I will turn it over to Carolyn.
Just joking, Shannon.
Good afternoon. We have three planning items scheduled for you on November 21st, two within the Lynn Haven District and one in the Princess Anne District. And both the staff, as well as the Planning Commission, recommended approval for all three of these items. Item one is the redevelopment of the 18-acre Marina Shores property that's located off of Great Neck Road near Shore Drive. There are really several components of this request, including a rezoning of about 14 acres from B2 Community Business District to conditional B4 mixed-use district, a rezoning of about four and a half acres from R 7.5 Residential District to P1 Preservation District, also conditional use permit for multi-family units within the Shore Drive overlay, and then also a conditional use permit for a commercial marina. There is an existing marina on this property and it was developed prior to our zoning ordinance necessitating a use permit for that use. So, this will really bring the commercial marina into compliance with today's standards. The redevelopment of the parcel shown in blue includes the demolition of the large dry boat storage building on the property and really the demolition of most of the structures along the water's edge, with the exception of the existing pool that's used by the marina guests, marina guests that will remain, and also the existing restaurant building which is located on the eastern portion of the site where the Surf Rider Restaurant occupies. The parcel in green is the preservation parcel and the proffers require that this site be deeded to a conservation easement after the city council approves the rezoning. And it also requires that an easement be granted for the passive recreation use of the neighbors to the north. So, that will really formalize and actually legalize their use of this site with, which they have done over the years for fishing opportunities and perhaps putting their kayaks or canoes into Long Creek.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, and I see the gentleman here from Public Works, and I don't know if you all are here specifically for this, but, but the, but the one issue that I've heard repeatedly about this is the, the perception anyway of increased traffic, whether or not it, it truly is increased traffic, I, I don't know. But, but the addition of a traffic signal right there as it comes out onto Great Neck Road and then a study of the speed limit on Great Neck Road as you come down the bridge, between the base of the bridge and Shore Drive. And, and those are the areas, and I was going to reach out, but since, since you're here, I just wanted, wanted to make sure staff takes a look at that and, and has some information specific to that prior to the meeting so we can discuss that.
Jim, just out of, something I picked up on, the people I've heard from who don't want it are the people who have boats in that place.
Yeah.
Am I picking that up right?
That, that's, I've heard from a number of people that have boats there, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, this concept plan shows the construction of up to 200 apartment units within two new proposed structures, 480 parking spaces, a new 4,500-square-foot restaurant at the water's edge on the left side of your screen there. And it also shows the existing restaurant pool area and the 166 boat slips to remain. When the new restaurant is constructed and if and when the pool area and the existing restaurant building are ever redeveloped, the proffers do require that the architecture of any of those new structures will be in line with the coastal-style architecture that's proffered for the apartments that are shown on your screen there. And the planning director will have ultimate approval of those elevations, and that's in the proffer agreement as well. They are seeking a reduction in the number of parking spaces. They are 66 spaces shy of their minimum parking requirement. And they have submitted a parking study to the zoning administrator who has reviewed it and concurs with their findings. And part of their strategy includes counting the 47 single-car garages that are proposed on that first floor of those apartment buildings. So, by counting that, there, they would only be 17 parking spaces shy. There were several letters of opposition received by staff. We did also receive, at the Planning Commission public hearing, an online petition. And we had three speakers in opposition that noted concerns related to traffic, safety, the density of the proposed apartments, and also the perception that this may decrease, have an impact negatively on their property values. We did receive one letter of support from the Broad Bay Island Civic League, which is to the south across Long Creek. And there were six speakers in support. And there were two other speakers in support, but they had some caveats that you noted earlier about seeking a reduction in the speed limit along Great Neck Road in this portion of that roadway, the construction of a traffic signal like Great Neck Road and Lynn Haven Road, and then also that the city not use our existing easement on this property for our dredge operations. So, this is certainly one that you will likely hear on November 21st.
John Moss.
I'd just like to get a copy of the parking study and I just want to make sure it counts for the parking requirement of the site if fully developed, including the lots that, you know, things that you say were not yet on the property but could be.
Certainly.
So, at full utilization, what is the parking requirement?
Okay. And would you like that this Friday or?
Before we vote.
Yes. In the ARF, when we send you the agenda request form or sooner, sooner better for you?
Well, I don't want, you have a lot of staff that you need to work, I just want to make sure that before it comes to that vote, the Friday before the vote, if I have it then-
That's sufficient. Okay, great.
That would be more than sufficient. I'd like to get a lot of things on your plate.
Okay, great, thank you. So, this site is really just up the road here on Princess Anne Road. It's home of Princess Anne Lodge Number 25, which was established in December of 1871. It was reload, relocated to this site in 1968. They are proposing to construct an 8,000-square-foot building for a variety of assembly uses. So, they're requesting a conditional use permit for assembly use. The applicant's architect evaluated the building and unfortunately found that the structure is really not suitable for their reuse. So, that's why they are proposing to demolish this building once their new structure is completed. Much of the existing parking will remain as gravel. The ingress egress points along Princess Anne Road will be reduced from two down to one, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Item number three is a request of the Cavalier Golf and Yacht Club to close just about 78,000 square feet of the northern portion of Cardinal Road. The same, same request was approved by the city council in 2000 and then again in 2009. But unfortunately, the applicant failed to meet the conditions in their allotted timeframe. So, they are coming back to you one more time, and hopefully this will be it, to close this portion of Cardinal Road. No other properties are served by it. We have a condition that recommends that an easement be established because there are some public utilities within this right-of-way and also as the property is located in sub-area two of the 60 to 65 noise zone, that no portion of this right-of-way be incorporated into any future residential parcels if and when in the future they ever decided to revert this to residential. And we are not aware of any opposition to this request.
Thank you, Carolyn. Appreciate it.
You.
All right, counsel, the way I see it, this is the end. Wheel of joy. Thank you very much.